I pledge allegiance to the flag of the highest states of America and pay to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Bouncing back at me out of a TV set.
Okay, we, uh, we had three additions to our agenda today. Consider approval of the indigent defense contracts for 2013. Review and consider contract for law enforcement with Solomon and consider establishment of the, uh, pay, uh, the salary schedule that we had vested for.
I move that we approve the agenda with the addition of those three items.
I'll second it. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Consent agenda consists of the minutes of the December works, December sixth work session and regular meeting. Fund expenditures of $145,591.17. We had abatements of $7,683.04 and added tax of $12,311.84.
Does this fund expenditures include the hand, the hand check?
Yes.
Best in on that.
Yeah, I added it too.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Okay, I'll second it. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Commissioners comments and committee reports. See what we-
I thought the meeting last night was, uh, worked very well.
Yeah. I think it's good to get the cities and counties together.
I do too.
With regard to last night's meeting, the, the highlight for me was the example of cooperation that Chancey provided in his presentation. I think that serves as a good example for, I mean, we've got it going pretty well, I think, in our county. Just keep working us, just keep working us. Interdepartmental and intergovernmental.
And I will say that does not exist everywhere.
Yeah. I thought it was an excellent meeting, mine also. Okay. Presentations of petitions, proclamation, and other of the comments. As we have done today. Okay, Brad, I guess you can start on your report.
Since last week when you approved us moving forward with Call Valley Engineering, we've since got agreement from them and kept them on the ground running for the overlay projects. So, uh, as a matter of fact, they, I think Wednesday got the agreement to me and I shot it to Doug and, and got it back and give them the green light. And this morning when I came in, I already had a lot of the forms filled out that need to go to the state. They did already for Janelle for the financing and, uh, they got people out there measuring and so, so I'm gonna take them along and get the information that we need. So, um, that, that process is underway. Uh, I had emailed you a la- a copy of the letter that came out from, uh, the Chairman of Homeland Security Council that deals with, uh, the statewide, uh, radio system. And as you know, you've got that. That kind of explains that, uh, in a nutshell, the state of Kansas has constructed and built a statewide 800 megahertz radio system that consists of roughly 76 radio towers across the state. And over the past several years, they've, uh, met with our council, met with each county and each many agencies and, and tried to get support to go on that system. And throughout all those meetings, we've been told that there'd be no cost to utilize that system because the state has to have it in place for the highway patrol and KDOT and other state agencies. And at a recent meeting in Topeka, Secretary of Transportation had indicated that they were looking at potentially charging local agencies to use that system. And one thing I would note about the, uh, the trunk system, the type of system that this is, is you can't use a radio just to talk radio to radio like we would in a conventional system. You have to be on the, on the trunk system without their backbone in place and utilizing their system. The radios that have been bought over the past couple of years by the, say, our Homeland Security Region and different agencies that have gone on the system are useless. So, uh, our county, uh, it doesn't have a big stake in it. Homeland Security has purchased a radio for each one of our four ambulances and for John and Dave's vehicles and for Chancey's vehicle. And then Chancey and I, John and Dave all four have handheld radios as well for emergency response. Um, but there are counties such as Clay and some of the others that their sheriff's department and highway department and everything migrated over to that system. So, um, they do have a bigger stake in it. The numbers that were mentioned by the secretary at that meeting were anywhere from a hundred to $400 per, uh, year per radio. And I know that sparked some response from, uh, the Emergency Management Director in Reno County because they have well over 700 radio units on the system. So you can imagine the cost that may be borne by a fee like that. The big issue being, we've been told from day one that we're never gonna cost. And of course, our tax dollars are already paying for that system. But we know that KDOT has to have it placed in the state agencies. So it doesn't take anymore to operate with local agencies on there. So that sparked the letter to come out to each county commissioner and each one of the 12 counties in our region that you received and asking that we draft the letter and make it send it to Secretary King if we elected to, to let, let him know our feelings on that and that we opposed any fees on that. I'm not so sure that we may not, you know, in the long run, a reasonable fee might not be unreasonable, but a hundred dollars, $400 is totally unreasonable. A hundred dollars per radio to me is unreasonable. You know, if it was a $10 or $15 a year fee or something, that's different. But to, again, it's, as we just heard from some of our representatives, you know, they're looking at the savings, we're looking at the cost that's being passed on, you know, shortfall at KDOT. You know, and I, I'm sure there'll be other issues come up with in other areas, but this is one that I don't know that it's best to, to dump some of these costs on local entities after you've got them hooked. And that's essentially what's happened in, in this radio system is they have gotten a number of agencies hooked because, and the last thing I would add is this is a system in Kansas that is, is far superior to, to any other states at this point. I mean, it's a, it's an envious system. We have, where you can stand in Norton on a handheld radio and talk to someone in Chanu, just like we're talking across the room. It, it's a very good system and I would hate to see them, and it's a position of our regional council, hate to see them shoot themselves in the foot and not promote it by starting to charge local entities an unreasonable fee. Hence the letter that came out, uh, I took the, the template and changed it a little bit to suit our county and you have a draft of it there if you'd like to, to send that and sign that and we can send it off. So that's what brings that, that one today, uh, if you choose to, to do that. So if you have, it may be confusing. If you have any questions on that, I'll answer it, but that's kind of what brings that about.
I do think we have to take Senator R.P.'s, incoming Senator R.P. counsel and be cautious about using a form letter.
Yes.
Yes.
I agree with him on that.
It'll go right in the trash can.
Right.
It, it needs to know how it affects us.
Yeah, yeah. The letter, that letter is not the exact form letter that was sent out. That's tailored more to our needs and included in it, to Joe's request, the amount of money that our region gave KDOT to help complete that system, which is another thing I failed to mention. KDOT fell, fell short in their financing to be able to complete the Northwest Region's towers in 2010, I believe. And our Homeland Security Council from our region allocated and gave them $122,000 to help finish that, as did some of the other regions, because we know as a state we want this thing together. And we're not, even though we have regions, we're not individualized. And so we helped pay for it to start with, I mean, so, uh, so I, I would say, you know, just, just say that that's not the exact form letter that came out. It has basically the same information, but it is tailored to our county with our, our specific needs, so. I do agree with that comment. Form letters don't really put the, mean their effects.
Yeah. Well, it's, the fee is totally, totally unrealistic that they would expect to pay that much.
You know, for some of these other counties to turn around and come up with $6,000,000 on top of-
The principle of them saying that, that it was gonna be set up at no cost and then come back and start charging us, especially when it's not costing them any money.
It's not costing them anymore. So.
Well, it's definitely something that we should try to keep from happening, I think.
Uh, our road bridge department, as you've heard last night and this morning, has completed 20 projects in 2013. That includes two bridges that they've replaced and 18 different structures and tubes that were replaced at various locations. Now, that's almost double what they've ever done before. Uh, and that's, that's Martin Mill and my eyes and they deserve to be commended for that, so.
There's some key to how, how they did that. What's the key?
Well, it's good personnel, first of all. Good equipment that we bought them, you know, for example-
The tamper.
The tamper, the contractor that we bought, things like that, that, that we've been able to provide them equipment that makes them work smarter, if you will. They can get so much more done with that piece of equipment in, in an hour, which would've taken them days before and jarring people around and-
It's hard on, it's hard on bodies.
Yeah, ends up with a worker's call claim where somebody's sick so you don't have the personnel to, you know, work the next day. And, and so that's really what's key. And, uh, and the fact that, you know, we're doing general permits. Call Valley's helped us with that. And the permitting process has been streamlined a little bit. That helps too.
On the general permits, that, speaking here for the benefit of, of the incoming commissioner, you know, the, the state's gonna do what the state's gonna do. That's a fact of life and it's gonna mean less money, I think, for local government to deal with things like roads and bridges. That's often the opportunity to, to negotiate a, a trade-off. You know, if you're gonna give us less money to deal with roads and bridges and give us a little latitude on Topeka Shiners.
Yeah.
Or, or things like that. And make it a, a trade, trading mechanism rather than, it won't, it won't do any good to set our feet in the sand and say we're not, we're just gonna be in opposition to what you're gonna do, 'cause they're gonna do what they're gonna do.
Well, we tried that and we didn't win, so.
But, you know, that's a very good point that there's ways that they could save, save us money by not requiring some things that are really unnecessary that they're making us do.
And I would guess is if, if their budget is gonna be as tough as it is, the guy who's dealing with Topeka Shiners may not be there anyway, but.
We actually discussed it a couple of months last night, Senator R.P. about environmental issues and that some of those offices may be cut back, they don't have time to come out of duty enforcement, so maybe the region gets some of those things accomplished, but, um, that's, that's a good point, so. But I think that is another reason why we've been more successful this year is, you know, in the past, we've tried to stay a couple of projects ahead and those permits may take us six months to years to get. Now we've been getting them, you know, within 30 days of a general permit. And we've been able to do some replacements with tubes that before we were building structures and bridges. And, uh, we've been able to send in engineering data and get that approved. Where we can do with tubes and do a project in a few days where it may have taken a month or two before, so. Working smarter, I think, and, and the crews worked very, very diligently to, to get that done. And the other thing I've added there is I would like to recognize them next week for that. Have a committee meeting to recognize them, give them each one a certain bit of precision because I think they, they are kind of the, you know, the unsung heroes, you know, though all of our county staff works very hard and I wouldn't take that away from them, but, you know, those guys are out there in 110, 115 degree heat, paving and chip sealing and, you know, it's, it's not a job that I could probably do and, and I, you know, they, they work very hard and they have worked hard, so. We'll line that up for next week if I have any objection, so.
I'm certainly, he's got a question mark there, I'm certainly expecting it.
Yes, yeah, yeah. When we did our bridge inspection tour, you know, we, we noticed, I mean, the kind of bridges that they're building now are really superior to what you would think that they could build and, and even the welding and everything, there's a potential against any manufacturer.
Yeah, I told Martin yesterday when we talked, I, I'd taken some pictures out there of you guys around the bridge, but I told him when he was in the area, get some underneath of the construction 'cause I want to set them off to known hours and have him use them for what it's worth, because I wouldn't put those up against anybody's work. I mean, they're, you can put any weight you want to across one of those bridges, so. And they do these superb work, so.
They've put a lot of welding into that big bridge that we looked at and, and, uh-
Yeah, so. Uh, just to let you know, we did purchase diesel fuel this week. Actually, both bids and props in KC were identical at 346 gallon. But it is coming down. We know we're gonna hopefully be able to take the transporter here probably first of the week and try and get it in as slow. I don't know what's gonna come down what's going, but it is down now, so.
Yeah.
I suspect it may be going back up once holidays approach, so we'll, like, get our purchase done while it's low. So, so we'll probably be taking bids on that here the first week. Uh, you have the elected official salary range information for consideration. And then just let you know that Martin Miller contacted me and said that Ken Wyatt and Dr. Jordan were planning on coming in next week at 10:00 to talk to you about the hospital bill issue from 2000, 2005 or whatever on the workers' comp, so. And I, well, I can email you, re-mail you that information so unless you still got the, uh, the letter and then the documentation that they provided if you'd like for next week's meeting, so you should be good.
My mind's made up. Don't confuse me with facts.
I understand, so.
Well, it, it's, it's nice to have the facts in hand on that day.
Yeah, I have a copy of your file, so. But that's all I've got, so.
You guys wanna see these, um, changes? They got the county commissioners in, in there.
Oh.
They're just, all of $10 every paper, you pay your $60.
The 2% doesn't add up too much, does it?
No.
Don't spend it all in one place.
We have it included, well, we did one time, but some of us didn't take it.
And Chief just said we did 2% on base, on what kind of we has and-
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, which is what was mentioned, so.
Doug, did you have anything for us today?
Not until you get to the indigent defense contracts.
Okay. Okay, notices, notices and communications, we didn't have too much here. I've signed all, I just initialed them all. Um, we did, we did get a, a Christmas card from the North Central Region Planting Commission and all their employees that signed it for us. And, uh-
They're together.
Yeah. And just our newsletters is all we, I think we had there, so. Okay, we had the one resolution. Could you read that for us here?
Um, I don't know, I'm gonna sneeze again. A resolution amending section 12B of resolution 072111 pertaining to the rules and regulations for collecting and disposing of refuse within the county of Dickinson, Kansas, providing for the licensing of individual haulers of refuse, setting forth the charges and regulations for dumping, uh, at the Dickinson County transfer station, providing penalties for the violation of said rules and regulations for the repeal of existing ordinance in conflict with such ordinance. Now therefore be it resolved by the governing body of the county of Dickinson County. The Board of County Commissioners previously adopted resolution 072111, which included section 12. Billing, payment, and refunds for county residents, businesses, and cities beginning January 1, 2012. Residents living in an unincorporated city, incorporated city, and all rural residents will be assessed a special assessment on their real estate property tax statements each year designated as a solid waste fee. Annual assessment for this solid waste fee shall be set at $15 per year for each residential parcel of property. The Board of County Commissioners does hereby amend section 12, subsection B of resolution 072111, it's missing a one here, to the sum of $18 per year for each residential parcel of property. The amendment is consistent with the actual charge assessed and is retroactive to the date of adoption of the resolution, of resolution 072111. The Board of County Commissioners does hereby approve the amendment to, uh, to resolution 072111 as stated herein. This resolution shall take effect upon its publication in the official county newspaper signed the 13th day of December 2012 and the one right here.
Why don't you take the motion since you got the numbers in front of you?
Well, but it doesn't have a number.
Did we get a one of the 12, I think?
I, I believe it'd be 121312. I, I move that we approve resolution 121312 before us today.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, that move is seconded. And what that specifically says is that it will be set at $15?
No, it said $18.
It was, it was.
It was 15.
Yes, but we charged 18.
Yeah.
So now we're at this 18.
And that will continue then at 18?
Well, that's for this year.
Yeah. You can amend it again if you want to.
Next year, well, can we change on the fee schedule?
But I, and I know we said this year that excess would help us from keeping to raise the hauler's fees.
What I'm concerned is that we're getting charged a little bit on, on the fuel, extra surcharge on fuel, so just maybe we'll have-
Will that help offset some of that?
Help offset some of that, if you can.
And we're gonna have to increase the typical fees that way, so.
Okay, okay, we've got a motion that's, that move is seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
A question, Brad, related to that. When will, so that we don't just keep stacking that fuel surcharge up year after year after year, when do you expect the trash hauler to 375 and say, "Okay, now this is zero"? Am I making sense with my question?
Well, they charge us, they charge us by the month, based on the price of, current price of fuel that they're-
Right.
That they're purchasing. And then, so there may be a surcharge on it one month and if the price of fuel were to drop down below that level, then there isn't the next month. So it, it's a variable. Does that, does that answer?
No, no, it doesn't.
Well, when we signed the contract, what was established when we signed the contract?
That.
That was established.
That was established.
Anything above a certain price. That, that our contract is a set fee up to a point where diesel is above, I, I don't remember exactly, 350 a gallon to 360 a gallon. Once it gets higher than that, then it's costing them more to provide the service and they want it to be allowed to charge us a surcharge on that, which we agreed to.
I understand. But my point is diesel fuel was once $3 a gallon, then it was 3 and 1/4, then it was 350, then it was 375. At some, at some point, they need to re-establish another agreement that says we're gonna haul that 350 a gallon and everything above that, rather than letting that fuel surcharge go on for one or year, one year, two years, three years, four years, five years.
Well, I need to re-look at the contract and-
See what, see what it was originally set up.
Good, because you think-
I think it's, I think we're about three or four years into-
But they're gonna raise the cost.
Are you-
If you set it higher, they're gonna raise the cost.
And because you think it's gonna, that the fuel is going to be high all the time now?
Yeah, I think, well, I think it's gonna have modulations, seasonal modulation, but there's no indication of fuel costs are gonna go down.
Right. Well, renegotiating the contract may also increase the other fees too, you know, I guess if they're, if HAMs is satisfied with their expenses, with the exception of the surcharge, we may be getting a good deal where we're at, I guess, with my own.
You have to sign.
And I will talk to Randy on vacation this week.
It's on the back, last page.
I'll talk to Randy and we'll look at that and see.
Well, that, that's, you're threading on pretty thin ice because they could say, well-
Sometimes you wanna kick that sleeping dog, you know.
We're not coming out anyway and so we want it to charge us all the way higher and, I don't know. But fuel-
But we'll look at it.
You know.
And I'll get back to you.
Diesel at 363, that's probably the lowest it's been for quite some time.
That's the lowest and we've got it 346.
So you would think the surcharge-
Well, it's, we're getting at 346, that's 375 or 380, so.
Yeah. But, right, and that's what they're charging us, is what you're getting from the pump out there soon.
Well, that's what they're paying and they're not looking at-
How, how long's it been since we haven't paid a surcharge?
I couldn't tell you.
Well, I just started noticing it really in the last year.
Yeah, it just, it, it's only when it gets above a certain level of we said, so.
But it usually is-
And I'll go back, I'll go back and get the records.
But it usually is now.
It has been for quite some time, but diesel prices have been up, yeah.
Okay. I guess, we do not have any unfinished business, so move on to other business. Take care of this letter to the KDOT Secretary King.
I move that we sign that little letter and send it to Secretary King regarding the state radio system fees.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, we, three additions and we have, first one would be consider approval of the indigent defense contract for 2013. And I guess, Doug, you have some?
Hi, Joe. There's two indigent defense contracts. There's a primary one that has four individuals that are paid $2,500 per month for a total of $10,000 per month. And it's the, it, the individuals are the, three are the same ones from last year, Gene Parish, Joyceland Lucas-Randle, Mitch Christians. Clayton Curves comes on, he replaces John Purvis, who was on last year, 'cause John has a conflict. And then the other contract is the one for conflicts cases, which would be if those four were unable to serve because of conflicts. We have four individuals who are on a flat fee per base, per case basis of $250. And those four individuals are listed as Alan Anks, Brad Janz, Jennifer Wyatt, and Ralph DeZegoe. And that's the four. Now-
They only get paid if they do.
Yeah, if they get appointed and that is a flat fee, with the exception of that being- Yeah, if they get appointed, and that is a flat fee, with the exception of that being a child in need of care case, which would be usually going on for sometimes the whole calendar year or longer. They would get additional money if that were to occur. But Judge Collett tells me that he believes the four can serve the needs. So I have those contracts are ready to go, and they each need to...
And it's for the same amount that we had approved.
Yeah, same that we've had for several years.
I move we approve those indigent defense contracts.
Aye, seconded.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried.
And they just require your signature, Mr. Meyer.
Okay. I guess we skipped over you, Joe, did you have anything?
Yes, I have emails.
Well, I'm sorry to skip over that.
We have happy holidays from Call Valley Engineering.
Happy holidays.
And there was an email to Sheriff Hoffman on drawdown of the COPS grant.
We have that.
And you've got that?
Yeah.
Just the information.
Yeah, Janelle had applied to get a drawdown on the grant, or any of what's on it, authorized list, so they sent a copy to your email to Sheriff Hoffman to get that authorization. Let's take care of it, so...
Otherwise, a lot of civic detection, potential viruses.
There are now no emails.
Okay. Yeah, we had it, I'm looking for that, sure. The next one is the contract for the law enforcement, contract with Solomon, and apparently it's similar to last year, which...
It's the exact same contract, with the exception it has a one percent increase.
I move we approve that contract between the sheriff and the city of Cops, Solomon for law enforcement.
I'll second it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And last addition to our agenda was consider the salary schedule that we had budgeted for, I guess that includes all county personnel?
No.
Oh, just elected personnel, okay.
And I would like to add Brad Hallman, our county administrator.
Do that.
Do that. So I move that we approve two percent increase to all elected personnel and to Brad Hallman, amount of two percent of their present salary.
Second here.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried.
Would you talk to Deputy King?
I can, we'll talk about that after we...
Yeah. Ask you, gentlemen, after we adjourn, would you stay with Doug? And then just go back into work session. One of the people last night, representative from Woodbine, had talked to me about something that I would like to talk about.
Yes, sign each one of those, Joe. Okay.
And if you could take the paper clip off and I can be, I could be signing it if you pass them forward.
They're coming down.
All right, thank you.
You got to get us one for you, Brad.
Yeah, I think that'd be a pink one at that.
Otherwise...
Do we have anything else, Brad?
I don't know many of the business today.
We did the letter to KDOT, right? I move we adjourn.
Okay, I'll second it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried.